There may be still people coming to join us, but I thought we'd go straight ahead and get started. And welcome to everybody online. We're using the owl here to communicate with folks in online. It's actually a microphone if I stand near it. Can everybody hear me well? Sound check.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, all the way back, okay. Great, well, I'm Susan Cockley and I'm known as Sue of the Planning Commission on the Chair, and I welcome you all to this meeting. I know many of you, but not everybody. And we'll give you a chance to introduce yourself here in a few minutes. This is the first community meeting of Planning Commission's zoning bylaw modernization update. It's a process that will go on for many more months. It's not a quick process because there's a lot to consider. And this meeting is the first time to talk about what this, what the zoning regs are, what, what we're thinking about in terms of what changes, what are some of the goals for that? And to begin a conversation about what is important to other people as well. So this is really a first conversation. And before I get into anything further, I just want to recognize and introduce our colleagues, my colleagues from the Planning Commission, and you could all raise your hand. Over here, over here, and there's one online trying to raise his hand. Andrew Morrison. We also have with us for our zoning bylaw project, our consultant team from Wyndham Regional Commission, and that is Sue Westa, Mike McConnell here. They've been working with us for a few months to really understand our regs and the issues and needs and ready to begin a conversation about them. But our process is also welcome, everybody. Sorry if you had trouble finding us, but you're here. Please come to a table because we'll be using tables for, for activities. And when you have a moment, there's a sign in place over here and agendas in the period you can pick up. So an unusual process that the Planning Commission is using for this and other projects is to have a invited project advisory committee, people with a range of perspectives and experience who are sitting with the commission as we meet with consultants and go through this process to learn, provide feedback, and engage other people in the process. Because we really believe it's important for the community to be present through the process, not just at the end of the year. And there'll be many opportunities. We'll talk more about how you can be involved. But I want to recognize the members of the zoning bylaw modernization, ZBM, we call that for short, advisory committee. If you all could just stand up, that would be great. We have a few of you here. Jim and Nancy and Peter and Ann. And I think there's a couple of others. Doug is online, thank you Doug. So there's several other members that have been helping us to kick off this project. And so, thank you. And I also, in my opening, want to just acknowledge and thank Landmark College for making this facility available to us. And I wanted to introduce briefly Jim Delugos, who is the interim acting president for the school, to welcome us. So Jimmy.
Good evening, everyone. Good evening. As you said, I'm Jim Delugos, and it's been my great privilege and pleasure this year to serve as Landmark's interim president. And I want to just take a moment to welcome you all. Everywhere I've been, I've been a couple of places over the years. I've always made it a point to share with folks that I believe this should be your college. Wherever I am, wherever I was, I would say the same thing. So we want you to see Landmark as your college. So please come back often, visit us, take advantage of the things that are here, try and figure out how to communicate more effectively between what's happening on campus and what's happening, you know, in town. I think there's a great future for collaboration between Landmark and Putney. And we're excited to be involved at this point in continuing work that's been going on. So you'll be hearing more from us in the months and years to come. And please really feel free to be part of this place. And I've learned a number of things in the last nine months, whatever it's been. I very much appreciate the fact that at one point Wyndham College and Putney were essentially the same, right? And so, we are always mindful of where we've come from. So we know that our connections between the college here in Putney and Putney are deep and we hold solid and will lead to wonderful things going forward. So I'm going to stick around this evening and be part of your workshop. I look forward to seeing you all again sometime soon. So thank you. Welcome.
And I'll just note that not only did they give us a facility, but they brought us the wonderful coffee and brushments, so thank you. I welcome that. And also, an awesome team that's been helping. So let me just say a couple of things about, about this meeting, why we're here. And actually, I'm going to give you a few people a chance to introduce yourselves. If you haven't been introduced already, let's do that. And if you can start here, just say.
My name's Betty Dell and I'm just here to learn a lot about how this works. It's going to be exciting to see.
My name's Jonathan Martin, so we move here and just learn.
My name's Cheryl, and I live here in Denver.
Welcome, thank you.
I'm Dawn King. I'm just a guy in Harold's.
Beautiful house in Denver.
Yes, thank you for that.
I'm Peg Alden, and I'm one of the five Select Board Members in town.
I've been introduced, sort of. I'm Anne Carey. I'm the Conservation Commission member. He's representing the Conservation Commission on my task force.
Connie Richards, I have been on the Housing Advisory Committees, and I'm now on the Housing Task Force and I'm interested in learning about zoning.
Okay, great.
I'm Vanessa Wong, and he's working towards being on the planning mission.
Gail Murray, and I live in the house that all of the way to our kids walk up this sidewalk path, right down the hill here on the park. So I'm very happy to see all this excitement around here. Been in that house for 40 years, so it's really great to see things changing.
Nancy Olson, Putney Community Center. I live in East Putney.
Jordy Keller, I've been here a long time since seeing what's going on.
He's also a listener for the town. And if anybody knows the properties in town, I think Jordy is one of those people who knows quite a lot about the town, what's where. Over here, Mike, anyone else?
Yeah, Mike Oliver, for the Regional Commission, and I'm doing part of the technical, doing this project.
Phil Banister, a Planning Commission member.
And Chair of the Development Review Board.
Jim Oliver, I'm part of the advisory group. I was the first president of Landmark College, so it looks different here than it did in 1984.
Yeah. It does.
Hi, yes, I'm Sue Westa, Associate Director with the Wyndham Regional Commission.
Peter Pajee, I am on the zoning bylaw modernization project, and I work with Wyndham and Windsor Housing Trust.
Alex Amat, I'm here for some curious.
I'll introduce both of us. I'm Nina, and this is Paul Goodevich, and we're just citizens of Putney.
And gardeners.
And gardeners.
Hi, everyone. Ben Oftedelli, I'm with the National Regional Commission. I'm considered.
Elizabeth Harris Warren, I'm on the Housing Solutions Task Force. I mean, they'll need things if I can.
A longtime resident.
Yeah.
Jonathan Betlands. What's going on?
Great, welcome Jonathan. Okay, so thank you for introducing yourselves. You should have, what's available on the table for you is a meeting agenda, and that's what the order of things will be tonight. After this introduction, we're going to go into an introduction to zoning. Really, a main purpose of this meeting is really kicking off with the public, the update to the zoning bylaws. So we're calling this a zoning 101, like what is zoning in Putney? What, what are some of the issues, needs that we think need to be addressed? Some are statutory, some are out of our town plan. And so, we'll learn about that, more about that from Sue Westa. We'll do a little exercise to talk about the implications of zoning for housing. Just a little activity that should be fun, we hope. And then Mike and McConnell is going to go into a little bit more about the content of what we're thinking about and the process and how you can be involved. And then we'll wrap up. So that's that. So you'll find the agenda on the table. You will also find some resource information. There is a piece of paper that has a lot of blue on it, and that's a lot of links. This is also all available on the town page, so you can actually link. This is resources about zoning regs in Putney and information about bodies who are involved in our zoning regs and how you can be involved, a whole series of options there. We'll talk more about that in the meeting. And on the very back is our chart, our schedule. And if you look at the schedule, you'll see that we plan to be done next January, by which, by which time we will have had a Planning Commission hearing and we end with a Select Board hearings. But there'll be a couple more community meetings and a lot of commission meetings between now and then. And that's what that schedule will tell you. And then there's a, just a FAQ, what is the zoning bylaw update? Why do we have an advisory committee? And just other relevant information, including a little table at the back of it that comes with the next thing I want to talk about, and that's our town plan. In 2023, we updated our town plan. It has a whole new look, a slimmer, more focused format, and has a series of recommendations. And the top recommendation in that town plan was to review and update our zoning bylaws. And so zoning bylaws have been updated periodically here and there, but in a piecemeal manner. So now we're doing something that's more integrated and more listed. So you'll hear more about that. So it's just important to see what the town plans say about, about this, this update. And then you also will see in materials our, our activity, which is a thing called Think Like a Developer, and we'll get to this a little bit when we get to that meeting. And there is also on the table a meeting participant feedback form. Whenever we do these, we like to know what, what matters for you, what issues you think are important, particularly at this stage, because we're just starting. And any other feedback about the meeting. So we hope that you'll take that few minutes to fill that out. So that is a brief overview about the agenda materials. And just briefly, the way the process is working, Wyndham Regional Commission was engaged as a consultant for a competitive bidding process last summer. And it is their job to review our bylaws, and indeed, they have been doing that, and to identify areas for change, improvement, efficiency, integration, to meet law, to make it easier to work with, and to address core issues like housing and natural resource conservation. And you'll hear a lot more about that. So that's overall what our process is for this. And I am now going to just turn this over to Phil Banister, who was Chair of the Planning Commission for quite a long time and has quite a history of implementing our zoning regs as the Chair of Development Review Board. So we know Phil also as Pip, so we will. Yeah.
Can you hear my voice?
Yes, yes.
Zoning, I had a survey course on zoning in graduate school, and I had this enormous binder of printouts. I don't remember much of it. I do recall that turn of the century was the beginning of zoning, started in LA. The idea was to separate industrial and residential uses that were, conflicts were emerging because of that adjacency. And another example that may be more anecdotal were the slaughterhouses in Chicago and slums adjacent to them. I don't know, I just Googled it, and AI doesn't really think it has a lot of merit, but it's a compelling story. So that adjacency was problematic, and cities began to develop rules about where certain developments could go, primarily to avoid conflict and issue. And it has developed further to the point now where most zoning is, has a clear intent to provide opportunities for development in locations that communities feel the development would be best suited. And in Vermont, it happened in the late 60s. That's when the enabling legislation was adopted by the legislature that allowed communities to have zoning. And I think in Vermont, it was a response, I was here, but I was just a young carpenter, not too into larger planning issues. But I think the development around ski areas was of concern to a lot of folks. And there, there were significant changes happening very rapidly, a lot of housing going in, perhaps without consideration of all the issues associated with that. The legislature adopted the opportunity for communities to have zoning. We live in a state, it's called a Dillon State, the two styles of how states can operate. Vermont has chosen the model where communities can't do anything unless they are specifically allowed to do it. And that 60s adoption of legislation by the state enabled communities to adopt zoning. Putney followed relatively swiftly after that voted to have zoning. Took about a year and a half to get it in place, and by 1973, I think, the town had zoning. And the big picture is to promote the pattern of Vermont development that most of us think positively about, which are the smaller villages and medium-sized urban centers typically separated by a rural landscape, sometimes a working landscape with farms or a more wild landscape, just the forested parts of Vermont. That isn't the way we looked 100 years ago, as we all know, but that's the way we look now. So that, those planning goals have been kind of brought into a set of goals articulated, sort of the SMART growth principles, which are basically what I said, keep the villages and the urban areas appropriately sized and don't let the sprawl continue out and make everything merge together into one developed area, but keep things distinct and try to have development appropriate to the place from which it's proposed. That's, those are the, basically the binding principles that Putney has been operating under. And some issues have come up. The state legislature put an emphasis on protecting our forest blocks and the connections between them. We didn't have any regs to specifically address that, but we were given an opportunity to adopt some. So this round of zoning revision will include regs specifically addressed in that issue. And housing, which we were all sort of experiencing, you know, for a decade or so without it being articulated as loudly as it has been in the last few years. Housing is always an issue, and so we want to make sure that we aren't creating any impediments to housing development in the town of Putney. And because we have sewer and water infrastructure, not a lot in the village and extends up here to the college, there is an opportunity for some more dense development in Putney Village. It's very constrained by geography. There just isn't a lot of buildable land that economically or affordably to be built on. But there's, there's some. So our zoning would want to make sure that addresses those issues. And then there's a slew of other kind of compatibility issues that zoning addresses. Noise and lights and vibration and smells and smoke, just irritating things that your neighbors do. Want to make sure that it's all done thoughtfully and intentionally and, you know, that people's rights to privacy and quiet and solitude are respected. I'm just going to sum up my principles. And we're going to take a little pass at that with our exercise. You begin to be a developer and see what some of the issues are when you want to build a bit more densely in a, in a village or small urban area.
So we're going to enter this introduction to zoning with Sue Westa in just a minute. But I realized that I do this all the time because I'm looking at all of you. I forget to put people on screen for the interview. So I'm just going to take a moment to acknowledge the folks. We can see that Mary is there, she's in the room, but.
Wait.
That's right. She just, Mary, by the way, just joined the commission. This is her second meeting with us, and she happily put her hands up to be clerk. So we're all jumping for joy. You may have seen Mary in town because she's the branch manager at MNT Bank since January. And so, let's stop and say hello. Anytime. But also, we have up here, I don't know, Andrew, if you're available, say hello. Andrew serves on, he's been serving for several years in the Planning Commission.
Hello, everybody.
And let's see, Doug, Grant, are you able to say hello?
Yeah, I just turned on. I'm, I'm sorry, I'm home ill with terrible sinus pain, so I'm mainly just observing. Thank you.
Doug is on our advisory committee and is part of the Housing Solutions Task Force, and has been a great contributor to thinking about how to evolve housing in our community. And Neil, would you introduce yourself, please?
Sure. Hi, everyone. My name is Neil Donahue. I'm a recent resident of Putney and just interested. I do a lot of work in affordable housing in my, in my work life.
Well, welcome. Glad you're here. And if you could drop in the chat your email address, then we can be, we can follow up with you. We have a sign-in sheet here, and this is our virtual sign-in. Thank you, joining us, Neil. All right, let me introduce Sue Westa, and I'm going to get your PowerPoint done. So let's do that. But you're going to see it reversed first, so if I know, I'll get a background.
Got it?
Yeah. Now it's pop quiz. Oh dear. Let's just start that again. Can we get full screen?
It's the online people so that we can see the whole.
Oh, you want to just, is that a mic?
Then we can see the table.
Yes, all right. Well, welcome, everyone, and thank you for joining us. As Sue said, I'm going to give a basic introduction to zoning and let you know a little bit more about Putney's specific zoning regulations and how they work. And we hope that after tonight, you'll have a better understanding of what our zoning project is all about and some of the things that we'll be considering as we're making recommendations in the future. Can you tap the arrows? Yeah, that's what I tried to do. All right. Well, Pip already gave you some of this history about zoning and how it got started. Although my colleague who originally developed this presentation for other communities in that region noted that zoning was first authorized in Vermont in 1931. So I don't know what happened in 1960. Probably towns actually began implementing zoning where they hadn't previously worried about it. And maybe they were given additional, you know, authorization to do things that they previously hadn't been able to. But more than 80% of towns in Vermont have zoning, although in the Wyndham region, that is somewhat less. We have only about 70% of our towns in the Wyndham region that have zoning. And so zoning is designed, as stated in Putney's bylaw, to protect the public health, safety, and welfare of a community. And it's been used in many ways over the years, but the primary goal is to manage land use and development in an orderly manner. Subdivision rates are, regulations are another form of land use regulations. And they really are more about how development occurs and the pattern of that development and how it is laid out on the landscape. And it's best used in conjunction with zoning. And we'll talk about all this a little bit more as we get into the presentation. And there are other special types of land use regulations, such as flood hazard regulations, that can occur as standalone ordinance or can be incorporated into your zoning regulations, such as the case here in Putney. Hey. Magic touch. Oh. Oh, what? There we go. One doesn't work, the other does. Okay, so hopefully this won't get too complicated. But traditional zoning, so you know, lays out specific land uses that are allowed in different districts or areas in a community. And these districts are laid out on the town zoning map. It also regulates the density of development through the use of dimensional standards and lot sizes that are appropriate for each district. And as Pip mentioned, zoning is enabled in Vermont by state statutes, which also have certain requirements that towns are, who have zoning are required to implement. Yeah, that worked. Yay.
The learning curve, yeah.
Yes. So zoning bylaws are set up in different ways, but there are some general things that are included in most zoning bylaws. And as we mentioned before, zoning districts are laid out on a zoning map, and they are formed around certain common attributes. So there are districts that focus on village areas, districts that focus on more rural areas. There are districts that accommodate more specific uses, such as commercial and industrial development, or might be more designed to protect natural resources in a community. And there are certain standards and uses that are identified within each of those districts to ensure that those, that new development is appropriate for a community and for. To ensure that those, uh, that new development is appropriate for a community and for certain areas of community. Putney's, uh, regulations say that the districts seek to provide an orderly, attractive, compatible and logical growth pattern by allocating, uh, various functions and uses to areas best suited for them. And this is what the Wyndham Regional Commission and the Town Planning Commission and Advisory Committee are going to be considering as, we're updating these bylaws. Do these specific regulations and standards make sense today? Uh, or do, do they need to be updated based on the needs of the community today? The next series of slides lays out the table of contents of the, uh, Putney's bylaw. We want to really let you know what is included in the document. Um, the actual table of contents includes actually more, a more specific breakdown than is, um, laid out here. But this will give you a pretty good idea about what's included in Putney's bylaw. And so the first section, Article One, is about, uh, how bylaws are administered and the process for doing that. The second, uh, article is about permits and approvals that are required and opportunities for variances and waivers, uh, that are available, uh, within the community. Uh, certain uses may require what is called a conditional use. And this means that those uses are allowed, but certain conditions must be met. And the Town Development Review Board may place additional conditions, um, on those uses. But it is up to the Development Review Board and the zoning administrator to approve those uses in Putney. Now, already touched a little bit on the zoning districts. These are Putney's specific zoning districts. There's a conservation district, resource district, uh, rural residential, village residential, uh, village district that, um, includes multiple uses or mixed uses. And there is a specific multiple, uh, use district in Putney as well. Article four lays out what is called planned development districts. And these are designed to allow some more creativity through, uh, core development. That meets certain needs or goals of the community. In this page, um, there's a planned educational development district. There's a general plan unit district, but I'll call it planned residential district. Putney's bylaw states that the planned districts encourage maximum flexibility of design and development of land in such a manner as to promote the most appropriate land uses. And Putney also has, um, general regulations. That's just Article Five here that are applicable to, uh, the districts throughout the town. So, so some of these regulations focus more on issues such as front, um, uh, access to, uh, properties. And, um, others focus more on uses such as home occupations and businesses. Yes. Uh, these are more of the, uh, general regulations in Putney's district. Just to give you an idea. Some focus on residential facilities and others are again applicable to, um, standards that are appropriate throughout the community and addressing such as lighting, landscaping and those kinds of things. Also parking. Article six in Putney's regulations are special regulations and these, um, address very specific uses such as gas stations, extractions of resources and campgrounds. Um, these are, have really specific requirements. And so they're laid out here in Article six. And Article seven, uh, identifies special consideration overlay districts. Now, an overlay district, it does, addresses an area of special concern um, that may transcend boundaries of multiple districts in a community. Um, and so they're often used to protect things like natural resources, um, streams and forest blocks. Or the, um, standards in the underlying district still apply. So for an example, if you may have a river that brought boats runs through many districts like, um, the village district and a commercial district. And those underlying standards in the village and, um, commercial district would still apply, but there would be additional standards put on top of those, um, uses in that overlay district to make sure that those resources are protected. Along a stream quarter, you might not be allowed to develop within a certain, um, distance of that stream. Or you might be required to have more, um, natural vegetation in that quarter. There are also flood hazard areas are protected through overlays in Putney and, and there are wetlands protections. And now, um, Article eight, uh, looks at non-conforming uses and that those uses and lots that were in place before zoning was in place. Um, and the section lays out specific requirements for those, uh, uses and the continuation of those uses and how they're allowed. And then finally, the last section is a definitions section, which is typically included in a zoning ordinance, just to make sure that everybody is on the same page and understands, um, things in the same way. Now, this is, um, Putney's future land use map from your recently adopted, uh, town plan. Uh, as was previously mentioned, zoning is one of the most important tools a community has to implement their town plan. And that's part of what we're looking at, you know, here today. Uh, these maps, uh, there are, this map, uh, shows the, those hash green areas are the larger tourist blocks in the community. Um, the yellow areas are more rural and rural residential. The colors are a little bit off here from what I was looking at earlier, but, um, the more orangey area are campuses and the red, of course, is your village center. And this is your zoning map. And there are ways that the zoning map courses, currently corresponds to the town land use plan, but there are other ways that it does not. And that's part of, um, what we'll be looking at through this process. Um, and Putney zoning, just so you can see, uh, these darker green areas are conservation districts. The lighter green are the resource areas. The yellows are the rural districts. Uh, this orange is village residential and the pink is the village district in town. So these again are, uh, all those districts in Putney. Um, and the more, uh, rural parts of the community, as you saw on that map, are identified in the rural and conservation districts or even rural residential. And, um, there are specific uses in the village district and, uh, a mix of uses that are allowed there. This chart was recently developed by a colleague, Mike McConnell, and this is just a portion of the Putney's land use, uh, chart. Um, there, there is not a chart like this in the regulations now, but this will be included in the updated bylaws. Um, it's just an easier way to organize, um, the land uses and see how they're laid out, um, in the various districts in the community. Across the top are the districts and the types of uses are laid out along the line. The green or permitted uses, um, are those that are allowed with, uh, more limited review by the zoning administrator in town. The yellow or conditional uses are those that require additional review and may, uh, by the Development Review Board and may require some, uh, more conditions placed on them. And then the black areas are those uses that are not allowed in certain districts. So you can see, um, the first two categories are single family and two family. And they're permitted throughout the town and, um, all districts. Right now, the state of Vermont requires that s- two family uses be allowed everywhere single family uses are allowed. Um, and then as you move down, you have three family uses which are permitted in the village areas. But then as you get to the more rural areas, they're allowed only with conditional review. And, um, in four families in the conservation area, they're not, um, allowed at all right now. That's what the black area shows. You can see a lot more permitted uses on this slide, including agriculture, um, childcare facilities and, um, forestry uses. This is a continuation of the chart. Uh, again, you can see there are, um, uses that are more limited and where they're allowed, such as retail services. And some of these uses like retail, it, it depends on the size of the retail business and where it's allowed. So, um, retail, small retail uses are permitted in the village district. Um, and although larger uses are allowed with conditional use. And in many of the districts in town, um, certain retail uses are not allowed at all. Uh, this is a continuation of the chart. One thing I wanted to point out here is accessory dwelling uses are allowed throughout, um, the town and all districts where single family and, uh, homes are allowed. And this was a requirement of the state a few years ago. And they did that in order to try and promote more housing in places, um, that, you know, in a way that uh, wouldn't really interfere with the community and would fit in better, um, with the community by allowing those incremental changes, um, to address housing needs. And this final slide shows more uses, um, again, uses that are not allowed in many districts of such as wholesale business uses. Um, the smaller wholesale businesses are allowed with a conditional use permit in certain districts and larger ones, um, may not be allowed in most of the districts in the town, um, only a couple, including this multiple use district on the far right here. Uh, we saw the, in the table of contents that, uh, Putney has general standards that, uh, look at things that, um, are applicable throughout the community, such as parking and signage. And this chart, um, is just a model that we have pulled from a guide that the state developed a couple of years ago called zoning for great neighborhoods. And it's been a really useful tool, um, that we have been relying on quite a bit as we've gone through this development or through this review process. This is another chart that Mike recently developed. This one looks at the dimensional standards that are associated with the various districts in the town. And, um, it looks at things such as lot size, uh, setback requirements, lot width, um, and even height requirements, um, for buildings. And so you can see that in the village, visit village residential districts, there is, um, broken down even further by whether or not sewer and water infrastructure is available or if sewer only or water, um, only is available. The smallest you, the smallest lots to the far, uh, left there, um, have both sewer and water infrastructure. And then it, the lot sizes, uh, get a little bigger, um, as is required, um, especially if, um, onsite sewer septic and wells are required. I just wanted to touch on a couple of other types of districts. Are you aware of them? Even though Putney does not have these, um, there are historic districts and design controlled districts that, um, and other, um, areas are more common, but here in the Wyndham region, uh, I believe that Wellington is our only town that has these kind of districts. But they, uh, provide some more guidance in how, uh, those areas can be developed. And I also wanted to mention a newer form of zoning, um, called form-based codes or form-based zoning that really focus on the form of the built environment and how structures relate to each other, relate to streets and public spaces. And this is really used more in communities, larger communities with more development pressure. But it's really interesting. It focuses much less on the uses that, um, are allowed within districts. And, um, they, one reason that smaller communities don't use it is that it requires a lot of upfront planning and also administration. And so it'd be very difficult for Putney to do, use this kind of zoning at this time. And actually, we only have one town in our region, Bradavur, our biggest town, that has sort of like, um, a form-based light code. It's not really a full co-, uh, form-based code. It does include some of these illustrated examples, uh, especially in the downtowns and their neighborhood centers to show how they want that kind of development to occur. Uh, subdivision regulations, as I mentioned, um, are really about controlling the pattern of development and how it is laid out on the landscape. You can see, um, in this case, a subdivision allows for a certain number of lots along a roadway and a couple more, um, in the back here. And it also, these regulations also, um, ensure that adequate access is available to all lots and that there's enough space for sewer, uh, septic and wells and, and all those kinds of things that would be required with new development. But they can also be used to protect natural features if they're used appropriately. And especially this form of subdivisions called conservation subdivisions, um, which is about clustering lots more tightly together, um, and allowing, um, more, uh, resources to be protected. So in this case, there are 14 lots laid out as a typical subdivision might be. But the lots, you're still allowed to develop the same number of lots in a conservation subdivision, but they're clustered more tightly together so they take up less space. Now, one thing is that of course, sewer and water spillings to be addressed and if there is no, um, public infrastructure available, sometimes common, um, septic systems are used in this kind of situation and, and common wells so that the lots can be clustered more tightly together. But you can see, um, in this case, this nice meadow, uh, might be an agricultural field or whatever the goals are for the community. Um, there's just some more flexibility in the design and layout and how, um, resourcing might be protected. So Sue already mentioned the handout that includes these resources. Um, all of this information is available on the town's website if you're looking for it. The zoning bylaws, the map, subdivision regulations and the town plan. And also information specifically about this project. And that handout also includes more information about how you can be involved in this project in the future. Um, and so please refer to this, um, website if you'd like more information or you'd like, um, be more involved in the process as we go forward. And with that, does anyone have any questions? This is my contact information, which is also on that wire and Mike says as well. Now, moving to the exercise, huh?
Thank you, Sue.
Yeah. Um, that's like 250 pages of material. I just did. So I think it's pretty impressive honestly. Um, and, uh, I'm getting familiar with it. I didn't, I hadn't read Arzani Rex until recently. And, um, it, it really is very interesting. It's helpful to have this overview to see how it all fits together, you know? So, um, everybody should now be at a table. I think everybody is. Um, and welcome. Yeah, we're going to begin activity. Sue, do you want to take us through it? But everybody's, yeah, on the table. So let me show you Sue when I hit, I'll read it. I hit it started. Hit it started. So, okay. Right. Let's do that. Let's see.
Jeff Oliver, could you come over to this table? Yes, please. And be the facilitator and another instructor for that. You remember the bigger pictures? But you put them over there and let's see. Peter, can you take people through the exercise here? Have you looked at it?
Yeah.
Peter, could you have the table over there? Would you like to come up here and do this one? And let's see, what other? Anon can help back there. Anon can do that one. And there's the package. So everybody, inside the package, the secret package here is handwork. My handwork today. To do this activity. And you're going to do this together as a table. So you're going to have a facilitator and four. Also, in your package, this document called Think Like a Developer. Need to what you're doing. The facilitator is going to take you through it. But if you have this document and somebody opens up the secret envelope, you'll be ready to do this activity. And if you need to write things down, there are pens and paper on everyone. Okay? Yeah. I'm going to say a couple more words about this before we turn it over to facilitators. And really, this exercise is designed to help you think through site development and better understand zoning work, zoning work in its implications. Sue mentioned the Think Like a Developer handout. This has instructions and information about the project. On the back is an image of a site. And on the third page are different types of folks that the state has identified as appropriate in many Vermont communities and village centers and downtowns. And so there's a scale at the bottom of this and on the map as well. And you can see how big the buildings are. And Sue made these nice little cutouts of those buildings. And there's also parking. And don't forget, you'll need a driveway to get in to your new building. To give you a quick overview, this lot is a little over a half an acre. And the developer is saying that they need to create eight units on this lot in order to make it pencil out financially. Water and sewer is available luckily. And there are no environmental constraints to worry about. There is this existing home that's historic, it's a single-family home. So that needs to stay. And the zoning standards are identified on this chart. And these are zoning standards for Waterbury, Vermont. That's where this lot is found. And so there are no really right answers here. I want to point that out upfront. But we hope that you'll learn something through this process. And we're going to come back to the bigger group and have folks share a little bit about whether they've been able to fit eight units on the lot or not or how many units were able to fit and what issues did you encounter on the lot.
It's a long home, it has to stay.
Yes.
One piece of paper.
No, yes, on here. So just drawing.
Just drawing.
That's why you asked him. Yes. Whatever you need to.
Yeah, I think. There's somebody who can read. In the physical word. Sure to give a child. Brian. On a volume that has.
It's not. Not very. Very bottom half of the area.
Right, I see it.
People understand how that's small, right? They usually find the stuff. It's in the back. I guess.
No, they don't have that.
Yes.
That's a distraction. Think Like a Developer. That's it.
Yes, and roughly.
And basically, you want to put eight houses, you're scared. It's already started. Then she's found, she's having a little trouble. How you move that, wait, how you move that. And it's such a good laugh. Nothing, just because. You aren't interested.
But it's asking.
I've never done it.
Yes. Yes.
Yes. But if you have a.
Yes.
So you can have it online. But it's going to suit you. So that's the house. Very narrow. This is where those developments happen, everything. And you'll have to figure out, you know, again, where the park. And you're. Yes. Yeah.
I would imagine. See, and others would say he's a. It's a bit difficult to feel. I would imagine.
Well, I see.
If you were both, yeah. Right.
Uh, well, then.
Yes. Yeah. If you're trying to fight. So here, right. So open control of why. So you had to pass that out. It's like a 14 building. But being real, I'm being. That's a more.
And that was Sue guy who's doing it. And you're trying to fight. The discussion is exciting. And this actor thought. It doesn't.
On the other side.
And down. They're walking. That's right. I won't be around here.
It's like. You know.
Maybe.
We got a couple. So that was. That's. Exactly that.
So I mean. I'm not sure it's zoning.
It doesn't look like there's any. Yeah.
Yeah, right. That's that.
It doesn't look like that. I can tell you. Yeah, the sun is fire. Fire.
Yeah.
So that was the night.
So.
But we do also. Right here. That is. One inch. To be. More. Yes. Yes. That's not main. Yeah. No, 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 no. My one.
Yeah, really. Five hundred. Yeah. Still over here.
Like you say. These, these.
That. Five inches.
Yeah. No.
Yeah. That's the size. It's not.
It's easier. Okay. In one unit, so one part. Right here. Always. Yeah. Touch it out. So you could. Three units. You could have a part. Directly in front of that. And one, one. That one we see there. So I can even. Or whatever. No, but there. And then you would. So just. One or three.
There's going to be a string of. Then we're not.
The seeds are connected.
There are so there. Yeah. That's.
Oh, what matters. Because that's why. Really. Definitely plus. I mean, this is that. That's fine. Here's the four. Like four days. I feel like the. For that.
You're right.
They try to. That's. So this one has even less on the. Yeah.
That's. You can just say. For.
You got to.
These have. And he asked. This one's much about one. Not that I'm aware of.
Yes. Sorry. But that's. You know, that's what I'm considering. So you do some of the scale. And it means minimal. Where the scale.
Wanting to count.
The back. Reers. Yeah. He's a probably hours. Yeah. Yeah. Because it's. We have. We best part. We think it is one year. Can you? Here. Yeah. It's the. So I could.
Maybe.
I'm. There I go. I don't write up just like that. Should it be in the middle? Or? No, there is. No. Yeah.
Two miles. Yeah. Yeah. So you don't. Or send that. Or you could have a drive. Now. Now. There we go. There we go. That's.
We're supposed to have. Yeah. 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 Seven. That's what I have. This is. And this. We were. I think. I think. So. So. There's.
I want to say.
So this one is. I'm successful. So.
Says.
Yeah. Uh. Well. Actually, that's.
Sorry. That like two.
Why? Well, still, we're thinking you're.
Yeah.
So we're saying.
Yes. The.
What you doing? Fortunately. Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. But it. Any one. So this. Okay, so what we have to. Yeah. Here. And also. UI. Yeah. Here. Yeah.
Um. We don't. Probably. So. They do. That's how. You know. Um. Here already. Don't be like that.
With the driveway. Yeah. That's like. Driveway. There's. Yeah. Uh. Yeah.
Cause that.
But they couldn't park. It just feels. Drive. This is. What this guy. Yeah. Yeah. We run that right there. Yeah.
What the state is. The state. Yes. Build up. Well. Yeah. Yes. We have. It's not building. I'm.
Why?
So.
I think. I want. We have.
And everyone. If you need.
And. It's like the whole other. So. Okay. Their. That. Yeah. So much. How's that? There's. That's not over there. Size. So we don't care much necessarily. It all the way. Yeah, this is one of that. Well, that's. Yeah. Yeah. It looks. So that's. Color and scale. Yeah. There's scale. That's. Long. Basically. It's. Yeah. Yeah, that's what. That was. That's why. Now. If it was being thirty-five. Right. I remember. It's driving. So.
Yeah.
Yeah. But. Well. Yeah.
It's.
Yeah. Oh, I got a theory. So you have. Five. Four hour. Seventy-five. Three. Yeah. You don't. Right. That's. That's. So you have thirty-four.
Twenty-eight.
Now. So. It could have to be. Well. Yeah. So. So. It's. That's. Eight. And this is. We're all resting.
Say no. And they have to be.
You're not.
That's. That's. This is. This is the man. They have.
I was talking to you. So. So you guys think. It's got a. About you. A lot.
There's. Kind of. But there is.
So. But. Do you need? That. Right.
Yeah. Some sort of.
So. And. But it's. People. And.
Obviously, they get at least. There's nothing. For. Small. These.
Yeah. You have that. What's with that?
The most. The most. So. I mean.
So. Why?
The time expression. So. As long as.
Okay. We got. That's.
Being.
So. We're.
I think. I'll figure. That was one. That's the name. They don't. You know. That's. What's.
I'm. They were.
About. You want to do. It doesn't. Well, I mean.
Can't buy. So. Right. Three. Yeah. It means. These are. Right. Yeah. Okay. Did you have? No, yeah. It's all. Scale. Yeah. That would be. You're. Such. A. Yeah. Yeah. Then. He's got. You have to be. That's. The first. Other.
Listen. To the fellows. You thought. That's. Pretty. I work. I get. They have. They. There. He's. I'm. So. When. You're in that. Well, he has. That's. I think. You're. Yourself. But maybe. Do.
Or.
Well.
Yeah.
Yeah. So.
Yeah. Making. I. That's.
A lot. Sometimes. Only.
Reason. You know.
And. But. I just. Because. We're. Not. So.
What is. I see. Let's say. You were talking about.
One. That's. Invention.
Yeah. This narrow. Topic.
Exactly.
I can. Sure.
That's. Right. We have.
Oh, it is. We'll.
Yeah. It's. For you.
Yeah. Well. Sad. That's. So. We. Were. The.
Yeah.
I got.
Five. And so. I will. Wrap me it up. And.
Well, have some uh input to the larger group. About how your exercise went.
Well. Getting. The. Whole. I have. Then you add. Everybody's. Like. Seven.
All. You've got.
Yeah. Exactly. Yeah. Cause. It's. It's. The whole. That. You're. Very much. You like. You're. You're. Yeah. That. You know. So. Are we. Thank you. For. Twenty percent. Is.
Might be. I guess. I'm.
Have. But. And then.
We end up. So. Yeah. So. We. In. In. Our. Yeah. That would. Come. Yeah. That would. That would. Come. This. Even though. He's.
Sweet. Yeah.
I got. Right. This is. They actually. Yeah. I mean. Of course. I saw.
Wasn't. Everyone. I'm. Go. This is. You know. How. He's. You want. This. Okay. We're.
And. You have. Watch.
You got it.
Okay. It's. There. And. So. That's. I mean. And. Yeah. Maybe. I. Collect. Yeah.
It's. I want. To.
All right. All right. You look. Down.
Yes. It's. Very. Next door. I love. We're. Trying. My. And that's. Also. And. Also. It's. Practice. And. What. Is.
All of the. I'm. Really. Slap. It looks like. That's.
Yeah. 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 Got it. All right. What?
That's. That's. The. Yeah.
That. We found. The. We're. And. Then. Friday. So. Anything.
You know. We're. That. So.
Yeah. So. I'm just telling you. You've got. You've got. You've. Got.
Yeah. We. It's. That's. Oh. Well.
It does.
I. Draw that. Mine. That's. So. I have. You. Uh. That. That's. Uh. Yeah. Yeah. Oh. Sorry. Yeah. Help. The. You. 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 About. Yeah. You. That's. Now. Right. Now. Now. Yeah.
Yeah. Same. Yeah.
This is. You're. Ready. That. Yeah.
That's. Right. So that. I. That's.
You know. Yeah. Three. Four. Yeah. So. What? So. Yeah. We. We. Got. The. The. Okay. I. Small. Yeah. Small. It's. Fits. In. Well. That. It's. Yeah. There's. So. This is. Yeah. Was. I heard this. I'm. Yeah. You. Yeah. It. It.
In. Bond.
Don't. Do. We. So. I was. Saying. Uh. No. I mean. We. Were. So.
I. I.
That's. Your. But. It. Walk. Right. Then. Have. Conversation. Or. Probably. A lot. But. And. I. Know. It's. Nice. Yeah. That's. Yeah. It's. About. This. Fifteen. Sixteen. A. Lot. Close. On. The. You can. We don't want. To. Be. Something. The. Perhaps. Again. Please. To. Go. And. Once. Here's. So. That. It. Both. Reach. Out. Of. The. Road. And. It's. Been. Here. And. Better. Come. There. Mom. You. That. Don't. Have. That. We. Say. And. That. Be. That.
Saying.
So. Well. It's. My. That's. For. The. Some. You. Oh. Right. These. Also. Right. Yeah. Yeah. I. Guess. Yeah. Oh. Yeah. Yeah. I don't. Think. So. I. Yeah. It's. Yeah. No. You. Got. That. That. Like. So. Yeah. From.
They. Yeah.
So.
Like.
It's. Like. Would. Off. But. Such.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
Okay. Yeah. I don't. We only have twenty one. We're. Right. I guess. Yeah. So you think. Yeah.
Well, I think now we'd like to hear from some of the folks about how this exercise went.
Hmm.
At their table, if you're able to fit units in there and how many.
Yeah.
Is there any table that wants to share first?
Yeah. 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 And then he said. The one. It's a little. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
Okay, we got one right here. Eddie, please let us know how it went. Table number five.
We were. We got. Uh. I like. I like. He'll be in the back and kind of anchor the whole space and. Uh, that's. Yeah. Three units. Yeah. Yeah. Stand up. Eddie, come on, everybody. Here. And then we did kind of building type C in the middle. Um.
Sorry.
Oh. I'm. Sorry.
We're. We weren't really. Two in the net. Fifty.
Yeah. Uh, here, I'll try to show you. You got the tape now. So we were able to put. To hold on to the driveway all the way to the back essentially, instead of trying to get people to kind of walk their way around. Um, and then building type T in the back, building type C in the middle there. Um, but the things that, I don't know, kept coming up in the conversation was trying to save a tree in the middle, so there is some. Some greenery, also trying to have some respect for some sunlight coming through, so they don't always bother truly in the dark. Um, and piling for snow. Where is it going to go and things like that? So fitting the actual space wasn't.
So you got eight units?
Cool. Uh, so we got four three and keep the one in the front if we're. Yeah. Start getting.
Yeah. Same. I'm ready to put your party.
We kind of. Yeah, most of it's in the front behind the. The stores building and then kind of two more spots and one more spot in the back.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But it's. Nice. Yeah. That's nice. I like that. Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah. Let's try and see.
Yeah. All right, with this table number three, you want to go next?
Representative. We don't have any ten.
Okay. Hello. On. We could just explain it to us.
Yeah.
Yeah. We have also, we have B in the back. Oh. 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 Yeah. Yeah. Uh, and coming forward, we have, we put all the parking in one place. We actually got nine units on the property. We put A in front of the stairs. Parking and C. Between, uh, between A and the original house. Yeah. And you got the driveway and all that. Yeah, great. What made a big difference when Sue added twenty five would be one. Yeah. 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 Right. Right. Great. Yeah.
We're in. Incredible. Beautiful. Stories. You're. So you're. Now. Yeah. Yeah.
All right, table one in the back. Yeah. 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 Both of them. Yeah. 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 There you are.
So we put the, um, the D all the way in the back. There are a few parking spaces. Decided and there was no room for a van accessible. You need it. And then we have three parking spaces and then the simulation type A. And then. Uh. One, the B. Four, uh, four unit and it was room for a parking beside it. Right? The road goes all the way up.
Excellent, thank you. How, uh, table two in the back here?
Yeah. Um, so we ended up taking the approach of basically deciding that, um, make two quadplexes in the back out of the lot, made a lot of sense. Um, that would be able to fit, um, the units well and then, um, keep it parking mostly in the middle, it sounds like. Just to kind of prevent unnecessary, uh, extension of the driveway, um, and have some walking paths, you talked about. Uh, with that in mind, how you make, uh, you know, potentially like, uh, older residents, right, preventing them, uh, from having to walk long distances to where they live. So we were like, okay, let's put more accessible units closer to where the parking is. Um, without having like extend the driveway out. I mean. So. Yeah.
Great. Nice. And the last one, yeah?
Uh, we have a very similar layout to a table over here with, uh, a building type B in the back. Um, C a little bit more towards the front and then A in the middle and parking kind of dispersed around.
Yeah. Well, I have to say that you guys really, um, focused right in on this and came up with some good solutions. When I was at a planning conference, we, uh, I saw the planners get really sidetracked on a lot of different things. And they were not able to come up with solutions so well. So congratulations. And I'll turn it over and like.
Thank you.
Yeah. That's awesome.
No less, a few more.
Yeah.
Yeah. Despite my best efforts, they stayed really on track. There. And, uh, I get to put a van accessible space. Yeah. Okay. Good job. Um, yeah, my name is Mike McConnell. Um, my main part in this, uh, project is the technical review. Hours passed. I don't know, a couple of months. Pip, Sue, uh, Karen, we've, we've all been meeting in the town hall on Fridays for a couple hours. Kind of go through this document line by line to come up with, uh, some changes that we think are appropriate or still kind of working through that process. But I'd like to talk about just some very high level things that we're, we're thinking about. And talk to you a little bit about, uh, the bylaw.
Let me just do a sound check. Can everybody hear Mike well enough? Great. Uh, a little more. You can project. It's also a microphone if you want to get it.
And back here, you can't read the slides, right?
Oh, okay. So. So this is the, this is the schedule. Um, all of the, everything that's in blue is an opportunity to participate, kind of like we're doing now. Right now, we're in the red box. It's public meeting number one. Um, where we put in the one-on-one, the exercise. Um, each of the light blue boxes are planning commission meetings where, um, the bylaw committee, which, uh, Peter is on and others. Um, are kind of talking about the project and what we're, what we're generally proposing. Um, the orange, those are the, the public hearing process. Uh, the planning commission will have one, uh, that's going to be in December of, uh, this year. And then the select board hopefully, if all goes well, uh, in January, I think six. So. Every project starts with, you know, a couple overall high level goals, things that we want to accomplish. Um, let, let me go back. So I think Sue mentioned it before that most times when a bylaw is updated, it's a very small update and it's for a very specific reason, you know, state law has changed, so we need to update something. This is more comprehensive, so it's definitely taking a little bit longer. Uh, but you still start from, from the same place, really. Um, you want to look at the format of the document overall. Uh, make sure it kind of flows as well as a document like this can. It's very technical. Um, you still want to make it readable for whomever happens to look at it. Uh, whether it's a homeowner, developer, builder, whatever, you want to make sure that they understand it. You know, kind of remove jargon as much as possible and just be concise, you know, don't use twenty-five words when, when ten will do. You know, get right to the point. One thing that I don't know that we're going to be successful in, we want to show the document as much as possible. Um, but there, you know, there's certain parts of it that, you know, they, it is what it is, the floodrags for one. Um, they accomplish a very specific goal and they do it in a very specific way. So generally, believing stuff like that. I don't. Um, we want to make sure that, you know, number one, we're conforming with state statute. Right? Make sure the document is legal, it's going to serve funny for, for years to come. Um, and one thing that is maybe not as typical for these projects, and we're going to try to look at the process, the review process a little bit and see if we can streamline that. Uh, Pip's description of the DRB meetings, um, seems like there can be room for improvement, you know, for, for the, for the board, for the public, for the applicants, and also for, uh, you know, town staff that are reviewing these projects. Uh, these are a couple of ways in which we're trying to, you know, bring information together. I think Sue had these Bubba Heard presentations as well. Uh, using graphs where typically everything in the bylaw right now is, is narrative. Um, this is an example of, uh, the conditional use. Um, section, it's actually a bunch of different sections, eight, nine sections in all. Um. Section two twenty, it's a page and a half long, but it references eight other sections that during the, during the meeting and the zoning administrator having to review these things, they're jumping all around the documents. We want to try to bring that a little bit, uh, together. Um, this is a, a snip of the use table that I created. Um, the, kind of the tan color is conditional uses and all the uses that have a C next to them require conditional use. So you can see in the future how those reviews may become, you know, much more than norm, uh, much more prevalent than maybe they are right now. I will.
One.
Yeah, thirty-two different review criteria for a conditional use.
Yeah. Can you explain a little bit more about what conditional?
You bet I can. Good question. So conditional use, conditional use permit is typically reserved for uses that could be seen as objectionable. Um, they may be produced in over or, you know, that they're loud, they're. So, something about them could, could be, could cause someone else to. So the DRB might attach conditions to, to those, uh, zoning permits. Um, hours of operation production or, you know, a number of employees, something along those lines that kind of mitigate that impact just a little bit. So.
So who decides what, what lies, what, what answers?
I mean, ultimately the DRB does, but it's based on all these criteria. The thirty-two different criteria, which are outlined in general performance standards. Um, the conditional use standards as well.
But, but what uses end up in that conditional use bucket as opposed to the Ps? The Ps are permitted uses. The permitted uses you, all uses in Putney need to have, uh, a zoning permit. The permit can be issued administratively at town hall and that could happen for any of those green P uses. The, um. I just amused myself with I D. I'm. About it. Yeah. We have a C bucket and in the C bucket, the conditional uses, the planning condition and you advisors uh, can help inform what uses seem appropriate as conditional uses in what district. So a use that might be appropriate in one district, um, without any question, nobody has any issues with that. Might, might require a little further review. So, uh, ultimately, it's the authors of the zoning rate that make a decision about where those uses go specifically for Putney. And that gets into the planning commission and the advisory.
And that's something that we're taking a pretty, a pretty hard look at is, you know, are, are these uses appropriate in these districts, you know? Are, are some that aren't allowed now appropriate, you know, and kind of just looking at that in a big way. So if there's, if there's thoughts on that, I encourage you, keep coming to these meetings and I definitely put your two cents in. Sure. Thank you, Ben.
Yeah, we haven't yet shared our thinking about that with, it's, it's still a work in progress.
Yeah, this is completely as is right now, um, in, in the bylaw currently.
Hmm. Yeah.
This is a typical review process. It's not necessarily Putney's review process, but, um, it kind of starts with the applicant. They have this, what I'm sure is a genius idea. They get all their state permits, you know, think like well permits, septic permits, anything from the health department, um, maybe it's daycare and they have to get their certification. Um, once they get that, they then submit to, um, zoning administrator, the town application for whatever they're trying to do. Um, the zoning minister then sends it out to the fire department or public works or parks, the parks department if, if a town has one. They get their comments back. They generally formulate some sort of report that goes to the DRB. Um, so that they can adequately judge, you know, does this project meet our criteria? So again, this is not necessarily Putney's, but it's just, um, a common way that these are reviewed. Uh, one of the, one of the goals of the project, um, one of the issues that Putney is facing, I guess, is housing, right? It's not new. Everyone knows about it. It's a big issue around here and really, you know, everywhere in Brooklyn. Um, the housing study that just, what, six months took a while, it's now done, recommends, um, eighty community units are created over the next five years. Um, and the next set is also from the housing study. Um, yeah, a hundred and five total permits in the last nineteen years in Putney. So that can be, eighty is a tall order, right? Um, by changing the bylaw, we're not, you know, people are going to start building the, the day after this is upgraded. You know, this is about kind of creating environment and that's more conducive to housing construction or, or renovation, I guess, for that matter as well. Um, like you just said, we're taking a look at all the uses, the districts that they're allowed in, districts that they're not allowed in as well. Uh, all the dimensional standards, um, ADUs or accessory dwelling units, um, mother-in-law suites or in-law apartments, whatever you want to call them. Um, and we'll get to that later as well. Uh, that's the convergence with the state law. The Home Act was passed twenty twenty-three. Near enough anyways, um, that kind of loosened restrictions on, on, uh, accessory dwelling units and kind of where they're allowed. So we're going to update that and, uh, make sure that the town is, you know, getting what they need for the, for the residential energy code as well. Yeah, this is the Home Act. Um. One of the main things that it says is that, you know, accessory dwelling units, you can't have a more intensive review process for them. They can't be additionally used for a single family home is allowed by, right? So, um, theoretically, that will encourage people to, you know, build an apartment above their garage or a cottage in their backyard. Um, we'll see. Uh, one thing that it does and that it could impact Putney is it allows, um, potentially more units to be built in areas that have water and sewer. Um, again, we'll see, you know, that there's a, many other factors that go into that. Uh, water and sewer capacity for one, that's a big one. Um, so, yeah, this, again, this won't build housing in and of itself, but we're trying to create that environment. And there's, there are some things that, um, the Home Act says towns must do that Putney already does. You know, the, reduces the parking requirement to one per unit. Putney already does that, so. That's nice. Um, I guess how the E U review does impact Putney is currently was a conditional use. Um, or is now will be. Hopefully that will get people to come, because I spoke with someone earlier who was thinking about doing that, so that might be a consideration. So we talked a bit about overlays earlier. And all diagram, right? Zoning's on top of the property and overlay is on top of the zoning. Um, it's absolutely an extra set of requirements or an extra set of restrictions, usually restrictions. Um, on property to protect, protect specific areas, you know? In this case, we're looking at them to, um, prevent forest fragmentations, protect forest blocks. Um, in the natural resources that we, you know, they're all around, it's great, they're great. We want to protect. Um, they could. You know, the, the restrictions could have something to do with, you know, where the building is placed on the lot, uh, what can be done on the lot. Um, things like that. So this is the future land use map on top. And then the state, I don't want to say designated, but this is where the state says that there are forest blocks, right? It's up to the town to then say, okay, we want to protect this one, this one, and this one. Right? But if you notice here, the green hatches on top and the dark purple areas, which are the highest priority forest blocks. I, I think they match up pretty well. So, uh, having a relate in those areas, you know, might not be the worst thing. Um, the, the brown areas on the bottom are connectivity blocks. Um, also very important, um, and they, I think generally line up with the future land use gap as well. So the zoning map, something that we're, we're taking a look at currently, there's a the way the zoning map was created, it was a, basically a buffer from rows. Um, and, you know, maybe it's more appropriate to use a parcel based zoning scheme. You can see the picture on the, my left or right, um, shows a property with three different zone districts in it. And there's a fairly complicated, um, formula in the bylaw now that says you have to, you know, run through this formula to determine if the use that you want to do can be, you know, is, can be allowed in this, in this area, right? It'd be much easier if whoever owns this lot was just in rural residential or just in conservation or just in village residential. No matter. So making it much more simplified. Um, another thing that could be a result of this project is maybe in, increase in the village district area. Um, I know there's a new neighborhood, neighborhood district in town as well, so you may including that. Uh, and maybe altering it to again, create that environment that, you know, facilitates, um, housing development. Or just really, I guess, development of any kind for that matter. Well, the subdivision regulations, we're going to start meeting on that actually tomorrow. Um. A lot of the same goals apply to the subdivision regulations as do the zoning bylaws, right? Want to make it, you know, as concise as we can, want to make sure that it makes sense, uh, that, you know, flows as well as it can. Um. The subdivision regulations, you know, they, they do a very specific thing, so I don't expect too many changes, um, there, but, you know, you never know. Um, we want to make sure that the, that the regulations can support the conservation goals in town. Uh, maybe create some subdivision types. Um, there are some act two fifty considerations that will be, um, including as well. And, you know, also again, taking a look at the, the process. So, are there any questions about that? So giving you a look at the, um, at the schedule earlier, there's a planning commission meeting every month except for.
August.
Except for August. Um, I'd encourage you to attend, you know, that's, that's how you get your, how you, how you get your, uh, your voice out there, your opinion out there. Um, my email address is up there. Sue's is up there. I'm sure she would appreciate you maybe contacting me. Um, and that's totally fine. If you have comments, um, I'm happy to hear. That's my phone number. Uh, extension one ten, you know, let's, let's talk about Putney zoning. Uh, I think that'd be great. Um, there's two other community meetings. We're going to go over the proposed changes, um, in more detail, in more specificity. Uh, mid-September is going to be the initial draft and then, uh, in November, we're going to have final